All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Lisa, can you take attendance? She's on virtual. But I need to unmute so she can hear me. Lisa, can you take attendance?
I can't. Can you hear me?
Oh, I can't hear her. Oh, it's my machine. Lisa, are you talking?
No, not yet. Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Oh, okay. All right. Joe? John? Greg Kava?
Here.
Jim? Alex? Justin? Jen? I'm here. Mike? Julie? Peter? And Mary?
So I see you have 10 people?
Yes.
Okay. All right. At this point in time, I entertain a public comment on agenda items. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? If so, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so I can see you because I have to toggle between screens. And if you're invisible because you don't have a camera on, then speak up. I do not hear anyone. I do not see anyone. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There is a set of minutes of the Board of Education meeting of August 17, 2020. Does anyone want to remove that from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, those minutes will be adopted. Update on COVID-19. I'll turn that over to the superintendent.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out. As you know, we had our start to the school year on August 31st. And on Monday, September 7th, we did have one member of the Chappagh community who did test positive for COVID. I have to acknowledge the person did a great job of sharing the information in a timely way. They were not only tested, they communicated, and they quarantined effectively. They truly were an outstanding community member to keep us safe and taking quick action. The DPH remains involved with case. We did have to quarantine just one additional staff member. That came down to just the method of contact tracing and as good measure. For us, we want to make certain that we're not just clearing the guidelines of what DPH suggests. We want to go a little bit further to make certain that we are taking all safety precautions. But we did not have to close school. And the reason we didn't have to close is because we are able to achieve that six feet distance. And also all of the mitigation strategies and what has been done and supported by the Chappagh administration. So inasmuch as sometimes it may feel a little oppressive, it is helping us keep our schools open. And so I truly appreciate all of these things. As of today, and I feel like I start a lot of sentences like that, okay? But as of today, there are no additional confirmed COVID-positive cases. So we continue to work. We can, you know, we do have some staff members who, out of good measure, decided they wanted to get themselves tested. But it was not based on a DPH suggestion. But again, knowing that they're taking the safety of our community in their own hands and making certain we have peace of mind. And thus far, I am happy to say that's where we are. So again, I cannot say enough wonderful things about how people are conducting themselves within the schools because it is allowing our schools to stay open.
That is really excellent news. I think we have bar none, the best staff there is. And I think we have really good kids, and I think we have very supportive parents. We are fortunate to live in the community we're in, is all I can say. So this is nuts. I'm muted.
But we can hear you through your microphone, so don't worry about if you can.
Yeah, well, in any event, okay, well, that's very good news. As I said, if you get through the first two weeks without any cases or any more cases, just keep doing what you're doing.
Okay.
All right, reports and recognition. I have been reading a lot of things. There are some excellent articles about where people stand and where schools are doing and how to educate people in this time. I think we have to come up with a solution that's going to work for our unique situation. And I think that's what the administration's been doing, and that's what I'm very pleased to see. This is not easy. But if we can't do it, I'm not sure anyone can. And I think that we have been accomplishing it. We have been open. We have had in-person learning. I'm sure the kids are thrilled with that. They probably wanted for a long time to get back with their friends and back in their classrooms, back with their teachers. And I know that our staff has got a good humor about the whole thing, which is not easy to do. I think it's important for people to remember that opportunities will present themselves. To go out and go to a restaurant, to get together with your friends, to have some kind of a meeting, to go out and enjoy yourself. You've got to think before you act, and you have to think, how is this going to impact my colleagues and my friends? And you need to think before you act. And I think that's critical because unfortunately, life is no longer easy. It's hard. And the good news is we're up to it. And that's what I hope people will do. I hope they'll think first. And so with that, I'm gonna pass this over to the superintendent for her report.
Well, I don't think I can do anything else but gush after that. And I do have to say, we've always been very proud of our staff. And I think we all know the amazing work that they've done day in and day out. And we've always felt they've gone above and beyond. And now what we're really seeing is what is even beyond that. And it's just, it's one in which we watch our staff, our students and community, who at this point, we have managed to stay in school learning for two full weeks. Today was the first full day of school for the kids because this board made the decision to do half-days. And I will tell you, it was very appreciated. It gave us an opportunity to have room for error. We were able to navigate some of the dismissal concerns that plagued other people because we gave the time. And what do bus routes look like? And how do we make certain they go from one school to the next? So even though we utilize that time for professional development, logistically, it was exactly what we needed. And so thank you to everyone who supported that. And I know it was unanimous decision. I also know that that sometimes creates hardships on our families. But I will tell you, it paid off. And we're going to be able to stay in school a little bit longer because we were able to adjust and modify and figure out what is the best way to operate. And we do have to ease into masks, and we do have to ease into this new experience. But I have to tell you, our families had our students so ready. Our kids came in, and even when I was in a kindergarten classroom, the teacher immediately asked, you know how far we need to stay away from each other? And every little hand went up. These are our youngest learners, and they were so proud to say six feet. And they knew. And they knew that this is a mask, and everybody's wearing them, and it's because we're taking care of each other. And I think it was done in a way, and again, a credit to the way our families prepared our children, that this is something that shows that we're responsible. This is something that shows we care. And I think our students have absolutely stepped up to that. And I think, you know, there is a strict adherence to all of the guidance that's out there. And again, kudos to the teachers who, you know, do the gentle reminders to let them know when the mask slips and to not make it feel so oppressive. And to find ways to bridge that social distance where it feels like they're still all together and connecting. Again, absolute credit to our staff, and I cannot, I can't gush enough. So all of these wonderful things only happen with our partnerships, and we do have partnerships. So as I mentioned, today was the first full day for our students. Breakfast and lunch were served at SVS starting today. And starting on Monday, we will include our elementary schools in that lunch service. A huge amount of gratitude to Nicole Grant and the cafeteria staff who are making certain that the nutritional needs of our students are met. And in addition to, now we're offering this opportunity for lunch through our elementary schools. The state of Connecticut has allowed for us to provide meals to students for free from now until December 31st. And we will get the federal reimbursement rate for all of those lunches that we serve. So this is a wonderful way to, number one, make certain our kids are fed, make certain that nobody is food insecure, but also a way that we are building our own financial capacity in our lunchroom. I hope that our people who take advantage of this, our students, get a chance to see this is what lunches are like in our cafeteria, and then decide that they want to stay on track with that. Hopefully, we find that we're providing a service to our families. So that was wonderful news.
Megan, can I interrupt for one second? So what you mean is, is it's a free lunch for everyone without regard to need?
There is, yes, there is no financial determinant. So everyone is entitled to a free lunch from now until December 31st.
And who said you don't get, there's no such thing as a free lunch?
I'm going to enjoy it while we have it. So over the weekend, some of our sports teams began practicing in cohorted conditions. We want to make certain that before we actually start our season, that our students are getting warmed up, they're getting their skills. We wanted to wait two weeks into the start of school before we introduced this. I think for us, we recognize that we will slowly increase the variables as we want to normalize. But we don't want to rush into this. We don't want to force the closure. So to know that right now, they're doing the cohorted conditioning. Starting on Monday, we will have our teams practicing. But competitions will not begin until October. Part of the competition schedule, we will also be watching about local spreads and how the other schools are doing with regard to their COVID and responses. So to say that the sports schedule is in flux is probably a generous statement. But I think that one of the things that we recognize is there is an importance to sports. There is an importance to that team bonding. We just want to make certain we're doing it safely. As Matt Paracci shared at the last board meeting, there are some strict conditions that our coaches have to adhere to to make certain that when our students are not on the field, that they're masked up, that they're not able to use our locker rooms. They're going to have to wear their practice clothes to school. But it really is, it's a small price to pay in order to be able to actually play the sport. And that's what we hope our students recognize. And the other thing, I am working with each of our PTOs and our building administrators, the principals, and I will again do another Q and A section with PTOs. The last time we did it, we were talking about hypothetically, what does it look like when we reopen? We talked about some of the conditions. But now that we're actually in practice and really being able to highlight some of those things that are happening behind the scenes. You know, it's our hope, and somebody said to us, we look like a duck on water. You know, we want it to look calm, but we know that things are moving underneath. And sometimes it's important that people know what their feet are doing underneath the water, and that's what we want to be able to share. And any questions people have, not to reassure, we're not trying to sell people into coming back, but we certainly want them to know what are the safety precautions we're taking so students do feel safe in school. So if there are no questions on my update, I just want to go through personnel. We have a couple of, not a couple, we got a lot of appointments, so we've been very busy. I'd like to welcome Tanya Adorno. She is going to be our technology education teacher at SVS. So she's going to be working with our film class. And she's already jumped in in high energy, and we're really excited to have her join us. Drew Burksdale, he was our math tutor here at Chappagh. We have had a need for one-year elementary teacher to cover some of the people who have been out. So he'll be working with us at Booth Free. Emily Berlou, who is our literacy tutor at Washington Primary. Hannah Bellinson, who is the building substitute at Chappagh Valley School. And hopefully, everybody recognizes that last name. She is going to be taking on our debate club this year too. So I like when things are passed down generation to generation. We have Rosie Ann Cece, who is a literacy tutor at Booth Free. Devin McCullough, another literacy tutor at Booth Free. Sharon Magner, who is the administrative assistant to the principal at Chappagh. And I think we may have mentioned her before, but at this point, she has just come right in. And we have yet to miss a beat, and that's a credit to her. Douglas Nadek, who is the new literacy tutor at Burnham. Caroline Sinacola is our new special education teacher at Chappagh. And Ken Schultz is a paraprofessional at Chappagh. And I'm certain if you look through the list and you see a lot of literacy tutors that we had to hire, we had a lot of literacy tutors because they were certified, get hired during this time into other districts. And so we wish them well as they continue their educational journey. We do have two resignations. Drew Burksdale, in order to take our position at Booth Free, he did have to submit resignation for the math tutor at Chappagh. And also Anne-Marie Sarabella, who was the library clerk at WPS. So that concludes our updates of where we are on staffing.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. There's a, the first item is a building construction update, and I'll turn that over to Don O'Leary.
Hello, everyone. First thing, tennis courts.
I've got to find him here.
I was gonna say, Don, are you there?
There he is.
Am I here?
Hey, Don.
Hello, hello, everyone. Tennis courts, tennis courts are done. Came out beautiful. We have yet to put in the wind fabric. That'll arrive in February and be applied in March when we start using our courts for school play. There was no need to order them now and store them. So that'll give us time to look at putting a logo on there. We've purchased one logo, but we're considering upgrading that. So next is Chappagh Agribusiness and Science Lab. Oh, in regard to tennis courts, we have yet to open the courts. I'm gonna leave that up to the athletic director here at the school. They are playable, and it's his call to, and the school's call to open it up. In regard to Chappagh Agribusiness and Science Lab, right now, we've, we're on track to complete commissioning of the HVAC equipment that's going to be scheduled very shortly. And we're working on punch list items that are going to be complete by the end of this month. And the landscaping plantings are to be done by the end of this week with acceptance thereafter by the building committee.
Thank you, Don. Ben, do you want to take us through the first-day school video? Ben, thank you very much. I guess we'll move on to the school reopening presentations, and I guess our principals. I believe they are all on Zoom.
They are. Would you be ready to start with our elementary, if it's a located campus in Emily? Can we have you kick off the conversation? Emily, are you there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Is it our turn?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
You want to share the screen?
I'm ready.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I think Kathy's going to start us off.
I am, and I want to thank you also for letting us share. I also want to thank the board on my behalf and that of our schools, Emily, also, for allowing those two weeks of half-days. It really made a huge difference. We were able to really experience the things that we needed to experience in shorter terms. And I think it just was superb. So thank you very much. So our title is "The Best Is Still the Same." And one of the things that we want to always remember is our schools are extremely special. And we don't, even during the pandemic, we don't want those special things to ever go away. So we want to keep those same things because they are the best. So the essence of our work together at the elementary level continues to enhance the things that represent our best and that we are most proud of. Our energy to create a positive school climate where everyone matters, the drive to support academic instruction that engages students, and our ability to forge positive homeschool connections. There is a strong, strong collaboration between the principals that has been enhanced since March. We've really worked closely together and continue to do so. There is common communications with staff and parents. And lastly, there are similarities in our reopening plans. So that's why we are sharing that together. So this quote, "The only way to make sense out of change is to plunge into it, move with it, and join the dance." With the challenges of the pandemic and the changing landscape of education, this quote certainly offers inspiration as we are called to draw upon our collective skills, our knowledge, our talents, and compassion to reimagine our learning environments and create a dance of success for one another and for our students. Tonight, we want to highlight a few areas showing needed adjustments while keeping the enthusiasm a new year brings. The first area that we wanted to highlight is building preparations. Now, as you see, safety first. Safety for our students and staff is always a primary focus. This year, added preparations in this area were necessary. So the idea of being responsible for self and others was really heightened this year. We had to promote physical distancing. We had to design travel patterns using markings. We set them in place in our spots in our hallways, in our large common areas. We used arrows and directional signs for stair use. We placed hygiene signage in the bathrooms, classrooms, and common areas. We identified an isolation room and an isolation bathroom access. Desks were positioned six feet apart. Individual material boxes were created to provide each student with necessary materials that they can use independently. Lunch spaces for students were established using physical distancing of six feet, either in the classroom, cafeteria, gym, or in an outside location. So, the next area we wanted to talk about was communication and what's new. Communication to all stakeholders has been and continues to be essential during this pandemic. Strategic delivery and frequency of communication has offered support and clarity in the myths of unpredictability. We never know what's going to happen next. So, our communication tools. The elementary schools have focused on four primary communication tools. Reopening plans were distributed to staff and families outlining new procedures, expectations, and answering potential questions. Weekly communications are being sent home to families updating important information such as technology support, use of Power School, which is really new to the extent that we're using it at the elementary level, the available lunch program, which we're pretty excited about, and new procedures like arrival and dismissal. Parent-staff meetings are both small group and virtual based on number of participants in space. New this year is the use, as I said, of Power School for parents and guardians to complete all school forms. And that's been big, and I think it's been extremely positive. As we continue to move forward, collaborative communications will continue to support and unify understanding and direction at the elementary level.
I just want to add to that Cathy and I have teamed since March and have been in collaboration with all of the communications at the elementary level to ensure that there was a unified message that was going out to our parents and to our staff and students. And we felt that that was really helpful in making the transition back to school so successful. The next area is arrival, and I have to say that this was probably the greatest high point of return. Everyone was eager to be together again. We were very energized to see one another. Despite the masks and the temperature checks and the physical distancing, students were welcomed with smiling eyes and lots of excitement. To prepare for this transition, physical markers for distancing and traffic flow were instituted. Bus arrival was done in a staggered fashion while students exited one bus at a time. Students guided by staff reported to their classrooms. Parent drop-off was purposefully planned to promote one-way traffic exiting on the passenger side and directions for walk-ins. Parents patiently waited for temperature checks to be completed prior to their departure. The routines were quickly learned, and surprisingly, the arrival procedures, both from the bus and also from parent drop-off, were really executed within six to seven minutes, which is really outstanding. So, we thank all our staff, our bus company, our bus drivers, and in particular, our parents for being so patient for these new procedures. They've been very effective and successful.
So, keeping routines, morning meeting is really important to us at the elementary level. It's really about community building and sharing of experiences. So, those are some of the things, part of our title is really about keeping it, keeping the things that we continue to do, but making a few changes. So, as part of responsive classroom approach, morning meeting continues to kick off our days and strengthen our community building. So, setting the day up for success, morning meetings are a daily practice that includes a greeting, class shares, and activity, and morning message. The structure remains the same with some minor changes. Greetings and activities are now creatively designed to avoid physical contact and to maintain individual space, yet continue to have fun and engaging. So, if you walk into some of those classrooms, there might be high-fives in the air, or there might be a hand made out of cardboard, and they're high-fiving everyone with their cardboard hand. So, there's lots of fun activities, and teachers have been really creative in keeping this morning meeting procedure in place.
Our morning meeting also includes our distance learners, and they have felt very connected. The next area is break time, and this is focused on personal care. Break times are essential now more than ever because the demands on personal care and hygiene have been increased during this COVID-19 time. So, break time is a combination of learning how to wash hands, wear masks properly, and social distancing. Those are reviewed daily. We have posters to serve as reminders throughout the building and within the classrooms. We have scheduled bathroom and hygiene breaks, and mask breaks are integrated and taken outside when weather permits. And you can see some pictures here of kids taking mask breaks, but also doing some activities to get their bodies energized and their creative minds thinking.
Academic time, it's really engaging our learners. So, welcoming back our students to a new year required careful planning and instruction. So, we really wanted our teachers to be able to, we call it kid-watching, and challenge their minds, but get a sense of where kids are academically. So, teachers prepared lessons that allowed them to learn about student skills that promoted learner success. Interdisciplinary lessons were developed to hook the learner into the school setting with enthusiasm. For example, our fourth graders are designing their own city using math, ELA, social studies, and social science and the arts. So, social studies, science, and the arts. The fifth graders are doing a great road trip across the United States, learning about states, regions, culture, and ecosystems. Second graders are doing a unit on Shapetown, focusing on creating shapes using 2D and 3D shapes while integrating literature. Our distance learners join us during key instructional times throughout the day. In addition, students remain within their cohorts. Teachers and staff travel to their classrooms, such as the library clerks, or the music, or art, or PE. Specials are on a four-week rotation with one special area at a school per four weeks, and we're finding that to be pretty effective. The outdoors are used as classroom space as much as possible, weather permitting. The kids are enjoying it, and I think our teachers are gaining a lot of knowledge about our students and where they are academically.
And then dismissal, home everyone goes. We, as Cathy said earlier, we're so grateful for the half-day starts. It truly allowed for greater supervision to implement the end-of-the-day procedures, and I think that that really created success for our students. Dismissal required, obviously, a good deal of planning as well. We had staggered bus arrival. Buses needed to be called one at a time, with students loading in line order based on route. All students obviously needed to wear their masks. They could sit individually, except if they are with their sibling. Parent pickup was in a central location. Students were arranged in order by grade or by name, six feet apart, and parents waited outside for students to be dismissed to them. Again, the procedures went beautifully with the supervision and the patience of parents and the cooperation of all our bus drivers, and so we're very pleased that those were successful.
And joyful spirit. What does it feel like to be back at school? We have a video that sort of talks about how that is.
Ben, do you want me to stop sharing to show it, or do you want me to just show it from here? I'm not sure if Ben is out there.
I'm not sure either. Do you want me to talk a little bit about this, and then you can show it?
If you want to stop sharing.
Okay. I'm just looking to see if he was ready.
Thank you.
It feels good because I'm excited. I was feeling good on the first day to see my friends and my teachers.
Good. I'm happy that I see my friends and my new ones.
Because I like putting a little tag, I like seeing my friends and everything, and having a phone book. Really exciting.
It's good. I like spending time in the classroom with my friends and learning about stuff.
It feels amazing to be back at school. It's so great to be with the children again. They're doing a wonderful job, wearing their masks and social distancing. It's just nice to have some normalcy back in our day.
Good because I get to see my friends and teachers, and they still make me happy.
It feels good to be back in school because I can see all of my friends and my teachers and be all together as a class.
Good. And I like it, it's really cool up here. It's fun. I've never been up here, and I don't have to deal with some kindergartners trying to make us help them for lots and lots of times.
Wow, it feels so great seeing the kids' faces, even though it's just their eyes. You can tell that they're smiling and happy, and it's just great to all be together again.
I like to go to school because I can see my friends and I can learn.
It feels nice. It's fun, and I like school a lot because you get to learn, and it's really fun to be back in school.
Good. But we have to wear masks, but we get PE every day.
It's really wonderful to be back. The kids are so enthusiastic, and it's so nice to see them happy to be learning. And, you know, things are different, but it's like we're just really appreciating this time that we have together in a way that we never did before.
It is awesome because it's so good to be able to be with the kids again in person, to be able to talk to them, see their eyes and the reactions when we are teaching them, so it's really good.
I like to be back at school because I get to see my teachers in real life, not socially, and I get to see my friends.
There's a lot of feelings about returning to school this year. It is so joyful to see the students in person again. There's also some anxiety as we learn the new safety procedures and the new way to teach, but I'm really proud of how resilient the students are in learning new ways to have fun.
I feel good because I'm happy that we don't have to be so far away from each other and that we can be like together without getting sick or it being too dangerous.
I like it a lot because it's a lot more interacting, and you can interact a lot more than when you're on the computer.
I love it because I miss my friends while I was away during the summer and also during distance learning. I'm happy to be back and to be in a new grade, to be learning.
So, well, we had a little bit more. Go back one.
All right, now you're asking for a lot.
All right. So, despite the many changes, students and staff celebrated being together again, and you can see that in all of those, just that video. The joyful spirit permeated our opening and made coming back to school this year extra special. So, we hope you enjoyed the thoughts of our staff and students as you listen to their many words.
And I think this quote really is quite meaningful. Some changes look negative on the surface, but you will soon realize that space is being created in your life for something new to emerge. And change, we know, can come in many different ways, and moving through change during this pandemic has helped us all show compassion and individual strength that has propelled us all forward to create something new that is beyond what we could have imagined. In the end, we really do believe that we are going to be better than our best. And so, I think this quote has inspired us as, you know, colleagues, but also our staff, and we're just moving forward, realizing that new things are ahead, and we're going to be better than we started. So, that's it for us. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
How many distance learners are there from each of the primary schools? And how are they coping with keeping up with the classroom instruction?
At Washington Primary School, we have approximately 24 distance learners, and I have to say that our teachers and our families have been cooperating beautifully together. And for the most part, we expected students to be on just during the direct instruction part of a lesson, but what we're finding is that the distance learners want to stay on and work through the lessons with their peers and with their teachers. So, we're finding really rather good success with the combination of both distance learner and in-person learners.
I would say the same is happening in both my schools, although we're having students return to school. Right now, at Burnham School, we only have four left that are distance learners. We've had several return. And at Boothery School, we only have six. So, again, people are starting to return, but they're doing a wonderful job connecting day-to-day and with the teachers and the students, so.
Thank you. Hopefully, as word spreads, they'll all be back soon.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much. Outstanding presentation.
A lot to be proud of, and so at this point, we can turn it over to you if you want to share your experience here at Chappag. And actually, I see my craft on here as well, so good evening to you both.
Okay. What we decided to do from Chappag is to ask our students to describe what safety looks like. The really interesting thing about this is that our brand-new teacher that you just officially appointed, Tanya Adorno, has been with our students a total of a very short amount of time, and our students are just two weeks into their new class, and they created a video to show us what was important to them about safety. And my husband is cheering for a ballgame, so sorry. It would be best if he stopped, but he probably won't. So, Ben, if you would please play the video that we created, and I can talk to you about the highlights from that as well.
As students return to school, Chappag Valley School is doing it right by answering our call to citizenship: wearing masks, remaining socially distant, and taking much-needed mask breaks. What helps to make this challenging time easier is how positive students and staff are looking at the way we are now operating.
Veteran teacher Scott Warcovin talked about how helpful technology has been to make sure all students feel engaged.
This time right now that we're in, everybody needs to make some adjustments. We're all trying to do our part to help each other along, and, you know, we're fortunate that we have the technology, and we have the webcams, and we have the Zoom, and we have Google Classroom, and hopefully, we are able to, you know, to reach those who are opting to stay out and to at least, you know, hope to make them feel still included.
As you walk through the halls and even on the bus, you will find students wearing masks and following proper social distancing guidelines.
The great thing is, like, I walk into the classroom, I don't even have to ask my students, they automatically, you know, we spray down the tables, they wipe down their workspaces, everyone is socially distanced, six feet apart.
With some students opting for distance learning, teachers are balancing teaching from the computer and in the classroom.
Online learnings, learners, they have us. So, I think they've done very well with, you know, being on top, the online learners and being on top of us. It's just kind of, it's one cohesive thing. So, it's been pretty good.
It's definitely hard to not be able to have a normal senior year like a lot of us wanted to, but, you know, I think the school is doing a really good job of trying to make it as normal as they can. Obviously, that comes with challenges because we Obviously, that comes with challenges because we can't really do as much as before. But I think they're doing a really good job to just try and make it feel as normal as it can be.
Hi, I'm Kim Gallo. I'm going to take my mask off for a minute since it's only us in this room. My materials as a principal are different this year. Always on my desk are a measuring tape, a thermometer, and goggles. But I'll tell you the good parts. I'm enjoying taking your kids' temperatures every morning because every morning I need to spend my time with kids. I don't get bound up in the issues of the day. I get to greet kids, I get to see them, and I get to take their temperature. And they're awfully good about it. As you noticed, our students didn't focus on what is inconvenient about COVID. They focused on the fact that they are answering their call to citizenship. And they are doing that very well. While our plan is not perfect, because we don't travel in little cohorts. We make decisions in high school and in middle school about classes that we're going to take, things that enrich us, things that we're curious about. So of course, that makes our plan somewhat imperfect. But we've done a very good job in zoning and cohorting our kids to the greatest extent possible, in keeping them safe by using safe measures and practices. And by the fact that we have such wonderful students. They really have been extremely cooperative in a very strange time. I'm so lucky to be their principal. Thank you. So our students did a wonderful job with this and in showing that they're a part of something that's bigger than just them. We understand that they have not walked around all summer with masks on. They haven't always followed safe practices. They play with their friends, they go over to each other's houses. We understand that. But they understand that school is different. And they're learning something about social distancing, about safe practices, that is very important. And they're doing that for the greater good. They truly do understand our learner outcome, answering the call to citizenship. Our staff is also appreciative of the technology that is available to them. You heard Scott Warcoven talk about all the different things that they use on a daily basis to engage kids and to make sure that our in-person learners and our distance learners have equal opportunities to be a part of the Chapag experience. That's very, very important. A positive attitude was evident throughout the entire video. And I'm very proud of that. It is a strange time for our students and for our staff. But they've risen above that. They've dealt with all of the different protocols that are completely different from anything they've ever seen. And they still make sure that we have a positive and supportive learning experience at Chapag. Our teachers talk about including our distance learners in a positive and strong way. And like the elementary principals, I've noticed that our distance learners don't sign off as soon as the direct instruction is over. They want to stick around. They want to see each other. One of the things that we've adapted just this week is to create advisories for our distance learners so they have an opportunity to be with other distance learners and to feel very included in the advisory process. Whether it's social, emotional learning, or obtaining help for their schoolwork, they're a part of our experience. Just like you heard from the elementary principals, we have lots of arrows and directional signals. The mall is one-way around the planetarium. And we have to all remember how to do that. The library is a big circle. And those of you that are in the library can look down and see the arrows and the stanchions that are up to direct people and where to go. We've done that very effectively and our students are completely cooperative in what they're doing. If you asked me back in July, would all of our students wear masks all day? Of course, we have mask breaks, but it still is all day. I would have said, boy, that's going to be a problem. And it's not. They've done a wonderful job. They're very cooperative. And they understand that in school, we follow these protocols, we follow these rules, and again, we do it for the greater good. I'd love to see some of the behaviors that I've seen in our students last far beyond the pandemic. Matter of fact, I'd like to be far beyond the pandemic. That being said, they've done some wonderful things. They've created some very strong and positive behaviors of citizenship. And I'm very, very proud of them. At the end of the day, when we line up our buses, our students line up in a very particular order so that they enter the bus and they enter to the back and the next row and the next row and the next row. They've never done that before. As a matter of fact, bus time was usually a time when you tried to get out early so that you could get that backseat. We don't see any of that anymore. They follow these protocols and they do a nice job of it. And they wear their masks again and again and again. I'm so happy to see our students coming into school with field hockey sticks and soccer balls. Sports are so important and they need to be active and they need to get back into those activities. I understand that it's a risk. And I appreciate the fact that the board has supported us in our efforts to get them active again. I think that this is going to get better and better. And it will get better and better, not only because the grownups are behaving the way they're supposed to and working very hard, and we are, but because our kids are very cooperative and they understand what it means to be a part of something that's bigger than just them. As I said in the video, I'm very lucky to be their principal. We've had a wonderful start. I don't even think I realized how much I missed them until I saw them coming into school again. We're having a wonderful time. We're learning very good things. And I appreciate all of the support that the board has given to us so that we have the opportunities to provide so much to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. At this point, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I think it might be a good time to take a five-minute mask break. So why don't we go out of order for five minutes until we're back. And to those at home, I'm sorry to order. Yeah, we'll have... What's that red sign, Ben? You just held up?
Your microphone.
Thank you. Now I know what that sign means. Okay. All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. And we are on to the presentation of the Class of 2020. So Mr. Boucher, you are at the floor.
Thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to share my screen.
And I cannot hear him speaking.
Can you hear me now, Greg?
There you go.
All right. I cranked up the volume a little bit. All right. Thank you for having me, Board of Education Superintendent Bennett. Also wanted to say a special thank you to all Chapag and Region 12 staff. I think the reopening has been seamless and I'm extremely proud to work in the district. Now, further ado, I'd like to discuss a group of individuals. And I'm echoing quite a bit. That I would consider trailblazers. Should be good. All right. Now, I want to start on the first slide with just the picture of all 75 graduates. What you have right here is 75 individual pictures. Seventy-five unique stories in 75 individual ways and, like I said, unique stories of getting through a pandemic. Something kids these age would never expect to do. And I have to say, from working with each of them pretty closely, this is one of the most remarkable groups of individuals I've ever had a chance to work with. And I'm extremely proud of each and every one of them. And I thought the graduation was the best culmination of, you know, a very trying time. But our kids really came together and it was one of the most memorable experiences in my life, you know, next to my daughter being born in my marriage, of course. Now, further ado, I'm going to get into the Class of 2020 report. So each year, I like to take a look at, you know, our breakdown of our graduates. This year, we had 75 students graduate out of 75 senior class, 100% graduation rate. You'll notice at the top of this page, as of June 18th, you know, due to current circumstances, unfortunately, some of our students' plans have changed. We're keeping in regular contact, you know, just to offer them support, you know, should they still need transcripts, recommendations, should they need, you know, any advice on what to do next during these trying times. So when you see the asterix as of June 18th, 2020, that's what that's for. Out of the 75 graduates, 80% of them were accepted to post-secondary programs. Now, you see post-secondary programs, that doesn't include just four-year schools. What we take pride in, the school accounting department at Chapag, is for our kids to really, you know, find themselves. And it doesn't necessarily mean going to a four-year school. You know, we've had success in several different technical schools and trade schools. And for the first time, I've been there, which isn't that long, we have a student that's doing an apprenticeship program at Abbott Tech at night because that's his passion and he's going to be work-ready, I promise you that. Going down to the four-year institutions, we have 55 of our graduates are attending four-year schools. Three have identified as taking a gap year. What a gap year is, you know, the standard definition is a year off in between college and high school, high school and college, I should say. However, kids use these gap years differently. Some use it as an opportunity to find themselves and study abroad, which we know is not happening right now. Some use it to work and, you know, to get money so that they can pay for their education. Some use it to do extensive research to really figure out, you know, what it is exactly that they're meant to be doing. You see five military, and we're going to wait until we get to that next paragraph because that is not all, folks. This is a remarkable class and something I definitely wanted to acknowledge in this presentation. We had three individuals who are attending technical or two-year institutions. Nogtuck Valley Community College is one of them, Lincoln Tech is one of them, and then the Abbott Tech Apprenticeship Program, the other. The Transition Program is right here within our Region 12 School District, the REACH Program. And then the workforce, we have students entering different levels of work. We have some going right into different, you know, jobs, landscaping. We have some electrical work going on as they work on getting an apprenticeship. So we have a very well-rounded class. And I had to put this picture in for this report because this was an awesome time. Following Kim Gallo and her, you know, and her convertible was a little challenging, but Mr. Paratchi did a really nice job of leading the way for the graduation sign. So I thought that this picture, you know, was unique to this class since we got to handle, well, deliver these signs directly to them at their homes. As I had mentioned before, this is, as far as military is concerned, I worked at Danbury High School for five and a half years. In my five and a half years, I not once had a class, over 700 kids have 10 students entering the armed forces. We not only had five entering active duty, we also have another five students receiving military scholarships. So I, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this. This is absolutely courageous and remarkable group of individuals. And as you see below, United States Air Force, United States Army, United States Marine Corps, United States Military Academy, just go on and on. It's, again, a remarkable group. Next category, each year, we like to give a sampling of intended majors, certifications, or programs that our kids are entering. So I'm not going to read everyone out loud. A couple left without me, air medical science. You know, we know, there's two actually seniors that did senior presentations in this category and it was phenomenal. And just watching both of them grow, not only as students but as citizens and answering their call to citizenship was fantastic. Social work is something I was always proud of. You know, neuroscience, you see a plethora of different majors and certifications. And that just goes to show the well-rounded nature of this class. Next page, we're going to look a little bit at our AP program. And as you're aware, AP was a little different this spring. I had actually just finalized a reorder for the physical AP exams only to be thrust in on March 18th, like everyone else, into distance learning and wondering, what is AP going to do? And within two weeks, they came out with a full-fledged plan because, yes, they have everyone working for them, but anyway. College Board came up with a unique plan to ensure that our kids were able to take the AP exam, that they weren't going over material that might have been gone over toward the end of the school year. They met them where they were, at their homes, you know, whether it be in an apprentice castle room like me, their bedroom, and their living room. They were taking these exams remotely and they were taking them from the comfort of their home. Typically, your exams are anywhere from two hours to three hours and 30 minutes. This year, every exam was no longer than 50 minutes. So the landscape was completely changed. I'm proud to say that even with all of these changes, our kids rocked it. Our kids, our senior class, you know, to be with exact numbers, 43 of our 75 graduates took one or more AP class. That represents 57%. Not only did these 43 graduates take over 80 AP exams, 17 of them were recognized as AP scholars. What does that mean? Take a look below. There's four different designations. You have AP Scholar, which is awarded to students receiving scores of three or higher. And those of you who don't know, APs are scored on one through five. So three or higher on three or more exams. Good night. I had to say good night to my daughter, everyone. Good night. I knew she would do that. Good night. Good night. Sorry. Can't say I'm upset with that. AP Scholar with Honors awarded to students receiving an average score of at least 3.25 on all exams and a three or higher on four or more of these exams. AP Scholar with Distinction is awarded to students earning an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams taken and a 3.0 or higher on five or more of these exams. So out of our Class of 2020, we had six AP scholars. We had four AP scholars with honors, and we had seven AP scholars with distinction. Here's our valorator in. Answering a call to citizenship, as you know, Ms. Gallo continues to point out, Chapag does it, you know, as good, if not better than most. Despite the challenges that this class faced, we saw a 600-hour increase from last year's class to this year's class as far as total community service hours. What's most impressive about that is, you know, as we know, starting in March, it was really hard to do, you know, active community service. Some kids were doing it remotely, you know, giving back through different ways. However, this class accrued 4,900 hours, 4,904 to be exact, as a class, which is extraordinary. And just to point out some of those things, 16 out of our 75 graduates completed over 100 hours. 19 of our 75 graduates completed double the number of required hours, which would be 60 because we require 30. And our community service award recipient contributed over 300 hours of community service. Future education plans. This is, like I said before, one of the most well-rounded groups. You know, we had some incredibly prestigious acceptances and students are, you know, going to some pretty phenomenal schools. But most importantly, you know, even more important than the prestige that comes along with some of these schools is, you know, their readiness for it. You know, at the beginning of this year, I was, at the beginning of last school year, I should say, I was impressed with this class. By the end, I admire them. It's not about, for them, it's not about the name of the school. It's about the opportunity that it presents. And it's about putting themselves in the right fit. It's about putting themselves in the right position to be successful. And as you can see, you know, our kids have done a pretty phenomenal job. Um, and as you can see, you know, our kids have, uh, done a pretty phenomenal job, once again. I'll leave that up there for a few seconds for everyone to take a look. Each year, uh, we create a document that outlines, um, the acceptances. And this does not mean students are attending, but what this does mean is students from the Chappag, Chappag Class of twenty twenty were accepted to the schools listed. We break it down based on the U, US News and World Report. Uh, they break it down by these categories, most selective being the most challenging to be accepted to, more selective, extremely challenging to get accepted, uh, selective, less selective, least selective, um, and then unrated. At the bottom, we have a new category, um, outlining prestigious institutions that, uh, are abroad. And we have a young lady that is attending the University of St. Andrews in Scotland. Yes, she made it. Um, but once again, you know, the, the most selective and more selective category, um, super impressive, you know, with our, with our class of twenty twenty. Um, and again, like I just said, it's, it's not necessarily about the name. I know what our kids are capable of, and I know that our kids, you know, they're going to, they're going to make a, make a big difference. Not necessarily about going and, you know, of course, we want our kids to get a degree, uh, but what they do with it. And I could tell you with confidence that this class is ready for just about anything. I'll stop sharing for one second because I have, actually, I don't need to stop sharing, I could just next out of this. But before I quickly show, um, our new school profile for the twenty twenty-one, uh, school year, uh, I wanted to open the floor. Um, any questions, any comments, and before I continue? Take that as a no. Okay. Chatty group tonight.
Well, I, I, Mi- Michael, I've always had a problem with, um, hold on a second, we've got, okay. I've always had an issue with this US World, uh, list of selected schools. I mean, the idea that, um, there are some fairly pedestrian state universities that are rated as more selective than Ivy League college, Dartmouth, uh, always surprised me. I don't quite get it. Um.
Yeah, and Greg, I, I, I agree with you, and it's, it's something that we've, we've done for the last three years. And, uh, I definitely am open to, uh, looking at another method next year, because, like you said, you know, sometimes it just, just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
I'd like to suggest that we, I'd like to suggest that we don't rate the schools that kids go to. Um, they are applying to what they feel is going to give them a good start in life. We should support that and not rank it. I'll leave it at that.
Well, I do know there are an awful lot of people, God, I hate that thing. Um, I do know there's a lot of people in the community, though, that are very much interested in how selective the schools are that our kids get into. Um, and it's a point of comparison between us and their other educational opportunities, whether they be private school or, or other things. So I think it's, I think the ratings are important, I just don't quite understand these ratings, that's all.
I would suggest that very few high schools actually do what we do, and the people who want to rank our schools against other schools can look it up.
Well, yeah, but the point is, is that i- if we want to attract the best students in the area, we need to make sure that people understand that our kids get into a lot better schools than, than many of the, the private institutions and other school districts around. Uh, they consistently get into some of the best and most selective schools. I just think we need a little bit better list than US News and World Report. I'm, I'm not impressed with that list, but I am impressed that a lot of the schools they rate as highly selective are indeed highly selective. Um, and our kids do get into great schools. I, I, I think it's, I think it's a tough, it's a tough thing to, to tread, but I, I think it matters. It, it matters if you can go to our school and it prepares you for some of the best educational opportunities that are out there. They're not all in universities. Um, I think it's just outstanding that we have, we have ten kids going into the military, that's thirteen percent of the class. That's a commitment to service that you just don't see. So there's a lot of impressive things in this list. I just, I just, I just am scratching my head at the US News list, but, uh, maybe, maybe it's the best one there is, and we have to live with it, I don't know. But, um, but I'm impressed with the schools and with the opportunities that our kids undertake when they leave here. I'm very impressed with it, I have been for a long time, and I found other people, when they find out, they're, they're amazed. Um, and I think we should, we should highlight that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, personally, I think if anyone were to just attend a handful of senior projects, they would see what our kids are about. I mean, that, that's the culmination in my eyes, you know, them, them in front of their peers, them in front of the community, uh, showing what they were capable of doing independently for an entire year.
That's absolutely, um, I, I, I went to a bunch of senior projects, uh, this past year, and I was just thoroughly impressed. Some of the, some of these were, I mean, most of them, all of them, in fact, were absolutely outstanding. And it was really an impressive collection of students.
I'm just gonna quickly share, uh, the school profile. And as I'm sharing my screen, I did want to say that I'm currently working on an addendum, um, to the school profile, um, which is just going to include specifics, uh, from Region Twelve and, you know, how we handled COVID nineteen, and what precautions we did, and, and, you know, how our kids really excelled, um, but also had the opportunity, you know, through one-v-one device, so on and so forth. But this is our school profile, you know, you're gonna see a lot of similarities from last year's. Um, the, you know, seventh semester GPA has been updated to include this new class. I could tell you right now that I want to say eighteen students, the top eighteen students in, uh, Chappag's last graduating class had a GPA of ninety-five or higher. Like, that's just that class in a nutshell. Um, one highlight I did wanna point out, um, you know, with something like this, less is more. We, we don't wanna draw too, too much attention, that's why we're gonna have a small addendum, um, as well, uh, but just, you know, an explanation, um, on how we gave the opportunity for students to, um, you know, go pass, pass a distinction, or, or fail, um, for the final semester. Um, and those grading designations are on our scale off to the right-hand side. Graduate piece was also updated, um, as you saw, eighty percent post-secondary education, seventy-six come to the four-year programs. Total community service, average SAT, uh, results were as follows, and this was for, uh, the one test where the entire class sat for it, the SAT school they'd taken in, uh, March of two thousand nineteen for this class. I added a few highlights at the bottom, uh, with our Model UN, uh, Chappag Dramatics. Shout out to Ben Allen, who I see running across back and forth, you know, we appreciate you, Ben. Um, and, uh, the Chappag Art Awards. And that. And I think, uh, I think I've talked enough, I'm kinda parched. But, um, I thank you again for allowing me to present tonight, and, uh, one more final shout-out. Ben, Ben Allen is kind of the mastermind behind the school profile and the layout. Um, I've compared it to several school profiles in our area, and it is exceptional. Um, so thank you, Ben, uh, for the countless hours you put into helping us with this. And, um, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak, and I'll shut up now.
Uh, that, that, it's an excellent report. No, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, unfortunately, I have to listen to myself echoing throughout the room, it's like the voice of God, and then certainly not me. Al, I'm sorry, Alex.
Uh, two points, a minor one, Dartmouth is not on the selective thing, that's University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth. There's a comma after Massachusetts.
Oh, is there?
Yeah. Two, I would recommend getting rid of this, this, uh, US News and World Report. Having a list of where our kids go, I think is sufficient. Um, people can look at it, and they don't, they don't need a magazine telling them what's a good school and what's a bad school. Um, I, I find that sort of offensive, so.
I agree, this, this was something that was put in place a few years ago.
Greg, I just, I would like to really highlight, um, when you're looking at our school profile, um, there's a lot of gravity in that document. And I appreciate the fact that, um, one, Ben, you've given it a very professional look to it. Um, but it's also the, the work that's gone into it on our counseling staff, as well as our administration. This is the chance they have to sell our students. It's one thing to say you have an A, it's another thing to say what that A means at the institution you got it from. And so at some point, when we're celebrating what Chappag is, it's because we want to give our kids that oomph to get through the door. This is what it means to have an A at Chappag, and here are the experiences you have. And I cannot undersell enough the work that's been done and the list that exists for the college offerings that we have here. Additionally, knowing that when you look at the recognitions and things that our students have achieved, it's because they have been with a supportive staff. And so really, you know, this is, this is a high-leverage document. This is really what helps our kids get into college, and to know the amount of effort that's been put in, that's been reworked and looked at, I, I, I just, I cannot under-represent how, how much this gives our children an advantage, and what's been done to make certain our kids are supported. So, Mike, I just, I needed to make certain that I said that, and thank you to you and, and your authorship in this.
No, absolutely, impressive document. Um, well done. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to the October one enrollment data.
All right, it's not October one yet, um, but I think that there's so much, um, that, we talked a lot about the volatility in our enrollment during this, uh, summer. So, um, I wanna share that as of right now, we have six hundred ninety-one students. Um, we do have twelve applicants that are still sitting in our power school enrollment, um, that we're waiting for them to just start school, so we have a fluctuation there. Um, additionally, we don't have our pre-ski, pre-K students that are involved in that count. But I wanna share with the board that we went as high this summer as seven sixty-eight. And a lot of, and then now down to six ninety-one. That's a huge fluctuation for us, given the population we have. Um, we have sixty-eight new residents in our district. When we look at what that breakdown is, I have thirty-four new residents in Washington. That is thirty-one new students at Washington Primary School and three at Chappag. I have twenty-nine new residents in Roxbury, twenty-eight at Boothbury, and one at Chappag. And we have five new residents in Bridgewater, all five at Burnham. And the reason that I wanna share this is, a lot of times, we've talked as a board that, you know, we love the tuition in, we love that people have, have come to us, and there are a lot of people who did seek tuition in that we weren't able to accept due to such high fluctuations. But we've always talked in, in, Pete, I'm gonna steal your line, because we had to build that base, right? And to know that now, we have a lot of new families who are giving our school system a chance, and really, we wanna make certain that they feel like they're, that this is home, and they get to see all the amazing opportunities. And we know that there are some families that may be temporarily here. You know, I, I talked to one of our students at Booth Free, and he explained that he's only staying at his summering home right now. And, you know, recognizing that we hope his summering home becomes his all-season home. Um, but I think that comes down to in conversations with some of our families. And, um, one mother who I talked to said she's never felt, she's always had her children in private schools, and she's never felt as welcome as she does in Region Twelve. And that's not a fluke, that's not us putting on a show because we have some new people. It's really who we are. And so right now, we know that there's still some fluctuation on our enrollment, we're gonna see what happens on our October one date. Um, we still have fifty-two REACH students that we did not accept. Um, right now, we also are looking at what the resources are looking like and what happens come January, because right now, I, we don't have the resources to give up that teacher to go to REACH. And so we're trying to figure out and accommodate, but it is to say, even without REACH, we're still hitting the number that we had last year. And we have some back and forth. We also have a lot of students who made the choice to homeschool. And that's where I don't wanna lose the children who chose to homeschool because they couldn't make both our schedule work here at the school and them remotely. And so we hope that those families stay in touch, we're certainly keeping in touch and checking in on them. But we've lost a significant amount of population because they don't feel confident right now that they could do remote learning, and they don't feel confident about in-person learning. So we're constantly watching for that, but I wanted to give everybody preliminary, because obviously, come October one, those are the numbers that we have to have for the state. But I wanted to say, there's a big story behind the numbers that we're looking at right now. And for us, it's about leveraging what we have and really showcasing, because we have the opportunity to build that base, so.
Okay. Uh, at this point, I'd like to add an item to the agenda, I'd like to, I'm sorry, Mary.
I was wondering if anything ever came up, oh, I have to do this one too? Okay. I was wondering if anything came up when you're speaking to state about these people now that have enrolled the kids in, in our school system. Are they now considered residents? And if they're now considered residents, will they be paying taxes to the state of Connecticut? And will they also now have to register their cars here so that the towns get the, the money for the taxes that, that, that we should be getting so that, so that we can, uh, afford to have everybody here?
So there are certain things that, that kind of go beyond us, um, but I can say that they have to establish primary residency, meaning they have to be staying at their home, and that's what, what counts for us in order to make that determination. They're always paying, um, their taxes on the houses that they're staying at, and that's what determines. But as far as, um, our ability to, to extend that to car insurance, et cetera, and, and, or the taxes that would be for their cars, that, that's really, that's a, that's a step beyond us. Nope, and, um, you know, we did, we do a lot of work and checking with, um, legal to make certain that we do have families who have two homes, and what, what determines what is primary residency, because that's where you are entitled to schooling. Um, we did have some families who asked if they could be enrolled in the private schools in New York and our schools, and do a little bit of both. Uh, the answer's no. Um, you know, it, it really is, um, something that we have to work with, but right now, if they are staying in their home, that is their primary residence in Washington, Bridgewater, and Roxbury.
Okay. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to add to the agenda, committee reports, they were inadvertently left off. Uh, will someone make that motion, please? Okay, it's moved, is there a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstaining. Chairman votes aye, it's unanimous. Uh, okay, uh, why don't we start, Mary, I think you're first, Cabe? Now, Mary, your microphone, please.
And am I supposed to unmute myself here too? No? Um, the only thing that I have to tell you is there, there will not be a convention in November for Cabe, and that they're planning on maybe moving it to the spring, but of course, that all depends on what happens in the spring. So, but that was the only thing, if anybody was counting on going, well, too bad.
Okay. All right, I guess the next is education, Mike's not here, is anybody prepared to make a report from that committee?
Okay. So we talked about, um, one of the things we talked about was the ninth. Sure. Um, we talked about the ninth grade academy. Um, Teresa, uh, gave an excellent presentation, um, sort of outlining, uh, the steps and really how it's, um, a whole school interdisciplinary, um, team approach that the ninth grade teachers are taking to, um, giving these students what they need. Trying to, was there anything else we talked about? I feel like there's one more thing, but. Okay. Yeah. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you pinch hitting.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I think finance and operations is next. Alex?
Um, we had our first meeting, uh, two hours ago since, uh, June 1st. So I'd not really prepared much, but I'll go over quickly the agenda that we followed today. We talked about the monthly financials, um, uh, how the school is being very flexible on, uh, what, uh, percentage of, uh, each department is, or each line item is being spent at, at, at any given time. So there's sort of a holdback. If you don't need it right away, let's wait and, and try and distribute it over the course of a year. Um, we talked about COVID and the reimbursements, the different funds. Uh, uh, one of the things that we talked about was the free lunch. There is a free lunch and, uh, uh, and then we talked about the expense of PPEs and, uh, what our needs are versus what we, supplies we currently have. Uh, we discussed the tennis court, which we've discussed here. Uh, Don gave an update on the HVA system. A hundred percent are in place, a hundred percent are operating. 65% have got their programming done and it'll hopefully by the end of the week, the rest of them will be done also. Um, we talked about the agri-science. Uh, uh, we are in the punch list phase. Uh, theoretically, uh, by the end of the month, um, we will have everything complete with the exception of a couple of things, uh, landscaping, lawns and the outdoor sidewalk. Those issues are still open. Um, and I think that was about it. So that's my report. I'm sorry. I'm not a little bit better prepared.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Jim, uh, anything on labor negotiations?
No, there's no ongoing labor.
He's on the video.
Can you hear me? There are no ongoing labor negotiations.
Okay.
That's my report.
All right. Good. Uh, long range planning, Julie.
Yeah, we're continuing to make progress on our marketing brochure. Uh, Mike Croft and I met and sort of fine tuned the language and the photos and so forth. And then Megan and Mike and I met with Sandor Max and it's just about done. We're just really struggling with the logo and we can't seem to like what they've presented us for lack of a better way to say it. And so we've politely sent them back to the drawing board. And in light of the circumstances, we feel like it's better to take the time to get it right than to rush this through. So we're just about there and we're, it's the sort of ball is in their court to present to us something that we think is good and then we'll be ready to launch it.
Be demanding.
Yep, we are. I think they hate us.
All right. Uh, John, do you have a treasurer's report?
Yeah, I have a few things. Uh, as far as the, um, budget, uh, Anthem and Blue Cross premiums, uh, were lower from March to June, basically because the staff did not utilize as much medical and dental. And in addition, Anthem, uh, issued, uh, the region a $30,000 COVID relief credit. So, um, that's, uh, that was actually for, you know, pretty much for last year's budget. But, um, also Eversource electricity charges were lower in the, concerning the elementary schools, uh, usage. Uh, the middle high school did not realize as much savings because, um, the contractors were working here continuously. And, um, the energy for the technology, uh, equipment, uh, was extremely high, the usage, uh, for the distance learning. Uh, Nicole also informed me that, um, the district is in a 17 school consortium for energy usage and we get a very good rate. It's locked for three years, point 074 for, per kilowatt hour, which is extremely well. Another good positive note was, um, the region received their first, uh, installment from the state grant for ag. Uh, that's $4,200, but that's, um, divided in four installments. So the first check was for $49,000 for the ag students coming here. Uh, well, all in just, in district and out of district. Um, we also received from the CARES Act, um, $17,000. The original appropriation was for, um, $24,000. But, um, two of the private schools, two of the four private schools also might be receiving a share of that. And, um, actually Deveraux is on the fence and if they decline, we'll receive an additional $1,000. So, um, every little bit helps. We are also scheduled, if all goes well, this isn't, um, this is not an entitlement, however, we do have to apply, um, the second wave of funding from the, um, governor's COVID relief act. It's scheduled to be 200, just had it, 231,000? Yeah. But, um, again, that, um, has to be applied for. And I guess we have to show, um, you know, where we, how we spent our, um, dollars for the, um, PPE and, and all the other, uh, necessities for COVID. Um, that's about it. I know there's more, but can't think of anything right now.
Thank you, John. Um, did I miss any committee? I think I got everyone. All right. We'll move on to the action items then. The first one is a policy, proposed policy 6114.8 regarding pandemic and epidemic emergencies.
There were three versions. You should not have received all three versions in your packet. You're just looking at version A, um, from the CAE policy. When we had the conversation with the education committee and we had said, is this just about what's happening during COVID or is this something that we feel would be good to have in our policies altogether? Um, the, the conversation said it's just, it's good measure. And, um, we know that we've put a lot of our policy work on hold, um, as we were going to ship, move over to shipment. But I think as we're looking at what's happening during the pandemic, recognizing these are emergency situations and how do we respond to those emergency situations, uh, as the curriculum and education committee, we decided to move this forward to the board for adoption or for a first reading. Sorry.
All right.
Move to approve.
There are a motion to accept this for a first reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. I have a question. Do we have a head school nurse?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Sandy Dabella.
And I thought we did, but I wasn't sure. I wanted to make sure that that's what this calls is the person who is the coordinator, um, or such other person is appropriate, is appropriate superintendent designates.
No, our COVID, um, point person liaison is both Sandy and myself.
Okay. So this actually doesn't the way you're currently doing it.
That's, that's why I was really comfortable accepting this policy.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
I just want to make certain. We have Lisa and Jim who are on the screen and I want to make certain that we record theirs.
Well, I can't keep it in the viewer view. So I'm sorry. I lost it. Jim, are you, hand up for aye? Uh, and Lisa. Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right. That's unanimous. Move on to the second item, which is to consider and approve the superintendent's goals 2020, 2021.
So would you like me to just speak quickly or like a motion first?
Well, we could.
I move that they be approved.
We could take a motion to put it on the table. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Uh, okay. Now, uh, we'll let you talk. Um, how come the first one isn't survival?
All right. Well, that's exactly what I said. I was just gonna like have one piece of paper that says survive. That's my goal. Um, but, um, to say that I, I did, I never want to lose sight of what we need to do and how we need to, um, conduct ourselves. And typically when you look at my goals, I've always put our academics first. I've always said, here's how we've done on our tests and here's what we're going to do going forward. And this year, I, I think it's foolish to have, have academics come before what is our health and safety. I think all of our decisions that we are making right now come down to what do we have to do to keep our children, our staff and our community safe? And I will tell you right now, distance learning is an inferior education. And to recognize we may be put into an inferior situation if health conditions exist. I'm not going to say that education comes first in that moment. However, we will continue to educate. We will continue to find a way to make certain, we're breaking through some of the barriers that exist. But we can't break through our health concerns. So saying that that was first is, is very deliberate. The second part is fiscal management. Oh, sorry. My, my watch did not like fiscal management. Obviously my husband has programmed this. Um, but it's to say that we need to make certain, we are making decisions. We recognize the, the huge expense that COVID is, is going to put on our system. And right now, the way that our, um, our administrators are operating, they are making certain that we are not being frivolous in our spending, that every dime is being watched and we are checking and double checking. Um, additionally, we've done things like, um, recognize that we know we're not going to get subs this year. That's going to cost us more to pay for teachers to cover classes that may be open during one of their prep times. However, it's a safer choice. So we're constantly balancing those two things, but we need to make certain that we are being fiscally responsible and that we're not overspending. And we're not overspending a budget that we made before COVID. And so that's something that we, we really recognize that, that changes how you operate. Um, so then going down, and we do want to look at our students' growth and achievement. You will notice there is, there are no S back scores that exist because we did not administer the smarter balance, nor did we administer the day test for the SATs. So there's going to be a big gap in time. But we need, we still want to make certain that we're looking at getting our students to perform, looking at those grade level expectations. And if they do indeed have a spring test, we want to see how do we do in comparison with our surrounding towns. We were able to have synchronous learning in the spring. It is our hope that we don't have, um, learning gaps as we continue to move forward. But we want to make certain that COVID has not impacted our school system. It's created a different continuum. It's created a different way that we're going to present the information, but we still need to make certain that our students are ready for their next step. Um, so the one test that we were able to do is our AP. Um, and so that's where you do see, these are our scores that we had. Um, our students took it in a very different way. So it's hard to compare, um, year to year. However, I'm proud of the results that we got. I, I'm proud of the achievement. I think that there were some, um, changes that we, we need to make going forward. But I think overall what we see is that our students achieved during some challenging times. Um, again, taking a look and going through some of the actions that we have, which do include, um, not having any new programs this year. I think in a time of COVID, I think it's very foolish for us to think that we're going to do a new initiative. I think we need to hunker down and we need to just make certain we're giving that solid education. We will be innovative when a time when we are more in a thriving mechanism versus a surviving mechanism. Um, agri-science continues to be a goal that we have. This is still our program and we are very proud of, um, the new talent, um, and staff that we're building in the program. We'll be really, really proud once we are able to get our animals back. We want to make certain that our children are in safely before we introduce more variables. But it is absolutely our goal to get this program up and running and to have our students have that experiential learning. Um, we certainly are looking at doing things differently, how they clean equipment in between, but, um, we're not willing to not have the agri-science experience and it really is a hands-on experience. Other things that we do want to make certain that we're also doing is that, um, making certain we continue with that strategic, our long range planning committee. We had a five-year plan. We want to make certain that we're still looking at that. And whether or not our timeline alters a bit, our destination doesn't. And so wanting to make certain we continue to look at that. Um, but within that strategic planning, it also comes down to making certain our teachers are planning to. What does their year look like? How do we want to help them achieve some of their goals? And a lot of this year is about planning and we are focused. We did that last year as well on domain two. We'll do it again this year. Um, and looking at how do we recover? And then the last goal is our public relations. And again, working with our long range planning, this is an interesting year for our public relation because now we have new people in our buildings. Part of our public relations is also about the education that we're going to provide people to make them stay in our region. So we want to make certain we're utilizing every, um, every opportunity to make certain people know that this is home and we have a lot to offer. So what I present to you are my goals.
Thank you very much. Um, I noticed that in one of your first goals, you talked about incorporate outdoor learning spaces as well as increasing fresh air in the classrooms. It was an interesting article in today's, I can't remember what it was, the Times or the Post, uh, that I read that talked about how in New England, in the, the aughts, uh, 1908, 1909 and, and after, there was a tremendous incidence of students and young people with tuberculosis. It was up to a third of the students, uh, had tuberculosis. And what they did was is they bundled them all up. They literally covered them up and they put them in classrooms with the windows open all winter in New England. This went on, over a hundred schools in New England did this. And they had a tremendous increase in their health and their, their, their viability as a result of that. And this continued until the 1950s, until we had good, um, antibiotics to deal with tuberculosis. But, uh, when you look at what this region endured, uh, back in those days, um, we may be forced to, to face similar circumstances now. But, but you should know that there's a long history of New England students sitting in the cold, being educated.
And, and I want to highlight, and I, I haven't, um, had the opportunity, but very publicly, um, the town of Washington purchased tents for, um, Chapag to make certain. the town of Washington purchased tents for Chappag to make certain that there was more outdoor learning opportunities. You know, Washington Primary, we have a pavilion, you know, we've got, you know, I know their PTO actually purchased some tents. I know we've got Burnham who's looking to purchase tents. So, we have the support of the community to actually create. So, we're using the Bridgewater Pavilion and you saw that in the picture and across the street over at Booth Free. And I really think the reason we're able to capture some of this outdoor space is because we have the community support. You know, the the statement is is use whatever space that that we have. And I think that is supporting our our health. Additionally, there's been the ongoing battle, the windows down in our buses. You know, Nicole making certain that she's, are they down? And we need to make certain that ventilation is is here and it's constant and we know what a burden it is. I will tell you, there was a rainy day and we're like, no, windows down. And our kids got a little wet. But it's, it's a matter of a little bit uncomfortable versus what is the optimal safety, you know, that we can provide for them. So, you know, I think, speaking to your point, Greg, that sometimes it may not be the most comfortable thing, but we need to, you know, honor and and recognize some healthy choices that we can make, including bringing the outdoors in or getting us outdoors.
Well, we had the, we had the the privilege of having a meeting this week at Booth Free School and we went down, sat behind the school because it was the only place there was an outside place to sit down. And I got to watch three different gym classes come out. And to see these kids absolutely perfectly socially distancing, to see them wearing masks, to see them wearing masks while they exercised, which I would have thought would have been uncomfortable. What I saw was a tremendous degree of cooperation and a really well-run program. And there was plenty of room for them. They had one class out there at a time and it was, it was a good event. It was exciting to see. So, you should, it's working. What you're doing is working. Okay. We've got a motion on the table. Do we want to, do you want us to to vote to accept these, approve these goals? I guess we do. Is there any further discussion of the goals? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And if you're on video, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Chairman votes aye, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Now comes the hard part. You gotta, you gotta do it.
I know. True.
Okay, we're now at the point where we have a, accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss and review the memorandum of agreement with the Chappag Valley Education Association and to discuss a legal matter. All right. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or if you're on the computer, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? Chairman votes aye, it is unanimous.